Any changes to the agenda?
No, Chairman, there are not.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Has anyone had a chance to read the minutes and do we have any comments or changes? I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Move to approve the minutes of November 10th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any general public comment not for the item that's on the docket tonight? Okay, hearing none. We can go ahead and move on to that item. Ms. Russell?
Okay, good evening, Chairman Langston and members of the Planning and Zoning Board. The applicant Duke Energy Progress requests a conditional zoning map amendment for the parcel located at 940 Morrisville Carpenter Road. The subject property, which is 14 acres, is outlined in red before you. This property is currently zoned low-density residential and the applicant is proposing to rezone to conditional low-density residential. The current land use, a major utility facility, was lawfully developed on the site in the 1980s and at that time, the site was zoned agricultural. In 2013, the UDO was created and that happened with two different phases. In the second phase, a zoning map amendment was taken under consideration and that's when the zoning district was renamed to low-density residential. This aligned with the designation on the future land use map and this movement to the low-density residential caused that land use to no longer comply with the regulations. So that became a non-conforming use. In order for the substation to expand, the use must be determined to be a permitted use and that's why Duke Energy has applied for this conditional zoning map amendment. The property to the north and to the east and also to the west is zoned low-density residential. Then across Morrisville Carpenter Road to the south, the land is zoned high-density residential. It is designated as institutional on the future land use map and the land use plan designates utility land uses as a preferred use. The land use plan states that a key consideration under the institutional land use is to identify potential sites for long-term expansion of community facilities and related infrastructure that will be necessary to maintain the quality of services and amenities in Morrisville. The applicant is proposing these seven conditions as part of their conditional zoning map amendment. Number one, utility facility major shall be a permitted principal use on the property is our main condition this evening and obviously, we can discuss any that you would like to later. This is the sketch plan that the applicant has provided. So it pretty much depicts the procedure for this evening and what they will do to the site. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning application for Duke Energy Substation located at 940 Morrisville Carpenter Road for the following reasons. At this time, if you have any questions for staff, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions before we speak to the public or to Duke? Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone who is here from the public, before we open this up, if you could, we had collected the signatures, we would like you to sign in beforehand just so we have a record of who had spoken today. So I guess I've got the first two here. We have Brian Cook and Aaron Bussey who had signed up. If either of you would like to go ahead and speak while we get the others?
Chairman, if I could request that the applicant be permitted to present the application and the additional information that might may come with that before public comment.
Yeah, we'll do that and then we can have the public comment. Thank you.
Chair Langston, members of the board, members of the public, our customers, thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening to talk about this critical project for Duke Energy. As has been submitted by Ms. Russell, we are requesting the expansion of an existing substation. This is a very critical project for Duke Energy, for our community, for our customers, for the town of Morrisville. I know that I do not need to describe the growth that has occurred in Morrisville over the past 10 years, but to put a little finer point on it, at the beginning of 2022, we were serving about 100 megawatts of load for the greater Morrisville area. That's to define the load on our system. In the past 18 months, we've had requests from developers, builders, customers that would increase that load by 125 megawatts. That's come in just over the past 18 months. So that would more than double the load that we currently have serving the town of Morrisville. That is represented by a variety of uses, life sciences, apartment complexes, residential developments, mixed-use developments. So we're seeing, as a matter of fact, a new high school is scheduled to come online in the next year. So we're seeing a variety of uses and a significant load increase, demand for load. We're at a critical point where we need to move forward with this substation expansion. As Ms. Russell stated in her comments, when we built this substation in 1987, it was built in an agricultural zone and that zone no longer exists. But we would appreciate your approval for moving forward with the expansion of this critical infrastructure for the town of Morrisville. And I thank you for your time. I've got several members of the Duke Energy team that are with us this evening. They are here to let you know of the critical nature of this project, but also to let you know of the commitment from the Duke Energy team to be here to work with our customers and community throughout this process. Thank you so much.
And can you just, for the record, state your name so she'll have that?
I'm sorry, Marty Clayton and I serve as the manager of government and community relations for Duke Energy.
Thank you. Any questions at this point or should we proceed?
Let's go with the public comment.
Okay, yeah, so if we could go ahead with the public comment. Everyone will have a chance to speak. As you, if you signed up, you can speak. If we could do that possibly in order in which everyone was here would be the best, I think. So if we could have Brian? Yeah, and when you come out there, please, just for the record, yes, state your name and the address also. That's correct, yeah. So our device is malfunctioning, so our intrepid...
I can talk loud if I need to.
But she will just, no, no, well, there's a timer. She's going to have a three-minute timer. Everyone gets three minutes and she's going to raise her hand when we get to the end of that.
I live at 109 Gratchett Drive. It's in the Richmont subdivision. Understand the need with the growth in Morrisville for the expansion. Lived in my address for eight years and I don't think... I say that is because there's a power line behind my house and they've been asking multiple times to bush hog, that's what I call it, or clear the brush out from under that. Though this because I've been to the HOA meetings, never done that. I'm more of a coyote habitat. Going forward with this project, I would like some assurances that, you know, the substation stands right now, it's not very visible from the road. It's not very visible from my house, but I can see the back of it and I can see the power lines are very visible from my house. Like some assurances that they're going to be a good neighbor, they're going to maintain it and they're going to bush hog behind my house for once. Probably won't do. Be a good neighbor, which I feel in the eight years that I've lived there.
Thank you, sir. We can have Aaron Bussey. Okay, thank you.
Lalitha? Hello, everyone. I am Lalitha and I live in 105 Leafy Creek Drive. My main concern is when you guys are expanding the power load or anything, is the radiation going to be more caused? Because if the radiation is going to be more high, so if radiation goes high, then you know cancers or tumors can develop because of the lot of people have, small kids, adults and elder people also in the same community. So my main concern, I came here just because of how much radiation we can expect when you are expanding in a little more bigger load. So that is the only reason I came here because I live in the map, you can see my house there from the second house. We are very near. So that is my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will apologize, some of these are a little bit more difficult to read. Is it Russia Lake? Okay, okay. Yan An? Yes, please, if you would like to comment, that way it will be recorded and she can have you in the meeting minutes.
141 Leafy Creek Drive. I just have a question regarding this one, this... Current or the future?
That is a future, this is the future proposed map if this was approved.
What are the current ones?
If we can scroll back, I think there's a, there is one that shows the current map.
Yeah, I just want to, okay, I just want to see how big the expansion will be.
Oh, I guess, again, there you go.
Oh, I see, so you're going to remove more trees? Lost to the house, right? Now compare this one to the, and you have the previous one. I see the, you got them. Ah, so do you see the green?
Yes.
How much? For the, for the utility purpose, right? House will be more, because no, much less trees between...
Right, this whole... Now, no trees.
Right, right, so they got the more...
Dark green is where the trees will be. Outer border here.
Carpenter, Morrisville Carpenter. Really the utility, the square?
Yes.
Current or, this is the plan, but it will be twice.
Twice, mm-hmm.
Current. That will expand? Up over there, right there.
Okay, yeah, so that's about three minutes, but thank you.
Susan, before you leave, I have a question. Perhaps it might help to answer this woman's question. Do you have a percentage of how many trees will be lost to the project?
I do not have an exact percentage. Does anyone on the Duke team know your percentage of removal? No. They can tell you the percentage they have remaining.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay, so we have two more people, so I mean, yeah. Let him do this and then we can...
I'm Newan Wijasuriya. I'm a permitting manager for Duke Energy Progress. Office is 411 Fayetteville Street. Currently, the, in order to be in conformance with the UDO requirements, we're required to leave 25% tree preservation buffer. We will, we anticipate, given the current plan as it's sketched now, to have roughly 40%, so in excess of what's required by the UDO.
Thank you. Rick, do you have a question or do you...
Yeah, I do, I have a question. So make it very simple. Currently, what's your footprint on your substation acreage-wise and what will be your new acreage footprint with the new expansion?
Sure, thank you. So the current size of the footprint of the existing substation is roughly 210 by 144 feet.
So acreage-wise, what would happen about to...
Not sure what, anyone got a calculator? I can tell you what that is, hold, give me one second.
30,240, so...
30,000.
Thank you.
Three-quarters of an acre.
And then what's your new footprint?
The new, new size will be, again, 210 by 280, so roughly double that.
Double the size.
Yeah, so 58,000, so 10,000, so yeah, an acre and not quite a quarter.
Thank you.
Okay, so Zelpin, would you like to? If you could, yeah, please, thank you. Could you...
I'm sorry, miss, could you go to the podium?
My name is Xiaoping Yang. My address is 105 Gratchell Drive. So it's the power line behind my house, same as Brian, no, yeah. So I want to know is the boundary, is your new station, yeah, expand the station, the boundary will be located is on the, to the dirt way? The dirt way?
I'm not quite sure I get what you're saying.
Close the power line to the power line?
Believe that the main transmission line appears from what I'm seeing on this drawing is going to remain in the same place. Everything that's going to change is going to happen within their property. Is that, that correct? Yeah. So there will be some changes within the property, but nothing should change between the power line and your house.
Okay, yeah, that's my, yeah.
Thank you. And Mary Ann? Wilcox? Wilcox, Wilcox, I'm sorry.
I live in 128 Hatchet Creek Court. I live exactly right behind.
So you live to the north of this, basically, is that what?
So it's going to expand like right into my kitchen, it feels like. I'm sorry, you're going to do whatever you're going to do and that's fine and I do understand that, I'm just upset about the trees. And it's nice now because we don't really see the substation. Except for in wintertime. And now we're going to pretty much see it and I'm worried about my property, what that's going to do to the value of it because people are going to think it's not as valuable anymore. So it's just a comment, I don't know if anybody could say anything about it or make me feel better, but it is what it is, I get it. It's just, I am worried what it's going to do to my property value and, you know, the trees, the trees. Worried about that, so that's just a comment I wanted to make.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anyone else that we missed that has not signed up? Thank you. All right, so any discussion of questions? Let's start with Josh.
So I have a lot of questions, so I'm not sure if I should do them all right now. Maybe I'll just start with...
Do a couple and then we can...
See where it goes. So the, the current footprint of the substation is that southern portion, is that correct? Okay, so it's increasing as we established, by about double the acreage or double the size to the north, moving north. The, the house that's closest to the current substation is about 330 feet from the current substation. So I, I want to reemphasize, I think one of the residents talked about the concern for EMF, ELF, cancer, radiation. So I just, I would like to hear from Duke some, I guess, some indication that this isn't going to increase the exposure to residents that live around the substation as you expand. So that's kind of the, my initial question that I'd like to have. I don't know if there is an expert here that can go ahead and speak to that. Right. And, and also, if you wouldn't mind going down to the, there's in the document, there was like kind of a FAQ page that had, that Duke had, I think it was like two pages that just highlighted different studies, things like that. Yeah, right here, that's it, thanks.
You can go ahead and just state your name for the...
My name is Kim Craven. I'm subject matter expert on electric and magnetic fields for Duke Energy. I am from Morrisville, North Carolina, south of Statesville. And I support the company on this issue in six states. I didn't know if you want to zoom in on this particular graphic or not, I'm not sure how you're going to use this graphic, but I can speak to the issue about EMF around the substation?
Please. Yes, yes, please do.
Okay. Electric and magnetic fields are concentrated around electrical equipment and the concentration of electrical equipment in the average substation at the fence becomes background level. It is concentrated near the apparatus inside the substation, but it really does not exist outside the fence. Now, you have lines, you have electrical lines going in and electrical lines coming out. That's really not changing here, so you have magnetic fields around those lines. But the substation apparatus and the expansion of the substation within the fence boundary of the substation, not the property boundary, but the fence boundary, becomes background level because it drops off very quickly. It drops off to a level that's below point sources that you find in businesses and homes. So it's, it drops off very quickly.
I think that one of the examples y'all used to kind of highlight how the station might look, where you compared it to the Holly Springs Station that was in the pamphlet. Have, have you, and you know, this, I'm somewhat, I'm very naive to this subject matter other than just reading different documents. How would you test the levels, for example, of that Holly Springs substation that would be similar to this one that's proposed? How would you test the levels of ELF or EMFs outside of that substation? Is there a particular device that you would use?
Yes, there's industry standard meters, they're called gaussmeters. Typically, what, what is measured is magnetic fields. That typically is the general public issue. And that, that's a, that's a simple industry standard meter that is used. Now, want to say, there is not a static value or a one value of magnetic fields at any one particular place. That, magnetic fields are dependent on the use of electricity. If no one was using electricity, there would be no magnetic fields. So when I mean static, there's not one value that you have at Holly Springs, there's not one value you'd have here. You'd move around when you get closer to apparatus inside the substation and only workers would be allowed inside the substation, inside the fence. It, it would be higher, but as you move toward the fence, it would get lower. So there is not a value for a substation or a value for an electric utility line or even a value for an electric appliance. You could state that there's an average value, a foot way from an appliance, you could, you could do those kind of things, but it'd be really specific to that appliance. Does that help you?
It does, yeah, and it actually leads me to another question. Are there going to be, and as I pointed out, the neighbor that's closest to the north of the current substation is about 330 feet from the border of where that substation is. So let's say, just for argument's sake, it's now going to be about 150 feet with the new footprint. Is, is there going to be, let's say that the person that lives at that parcel closest, if there's someone that has like a pacemaker or something, are they going to be impacted by the proximity to the substation?
Well, on the flip, flip side of this graphic that you have, it speaks to different topics. Implanted devices is one of those topics. And implanted devices are built to international standards. We, as, as a utility, we do not have any say in what's implanted in a, in a person. That's, that's a medical thing and we can't speak to any particular implanted device, but the devices that are built to international standards far exceed any susceptibility that you would have from electric utility lines. They're, they're so low in electric and, and magnetic fields, I mean, their susceptibility is so high that the, the lower levels of electric and magnetic fields that you'd get from public exposure to power frequency EMF is, is, they don't affect each other. Now that, but, but we can't say for a specific individual, that would be determined by the implanted device and if it's built to international standards. and if it's built to international standards. And that's spoken to on, on the backside of that brochure.
But you'd previously stated that if, if the fields drop off to background level, basically at your fence, does that mean that there should be no difference to any houses?
Basically, there'd be no difference in the house because we're talking about the, the graphic we had up earlier. I'm talking about the fence around.
No, I understand, right.
Not, not even at the, not even at the property.
Right, right, right. So that stands to reason, if it drops to background level, then, you know, unless you got very close to someone's house, like literally in their backyard, you're, you're saying that there would be no measurable difference?
Right. And if, if there are no utility wires there, I'm talking, we're talking about the substation for the most part here. But if there's, there's no addition to any wires between the two, there would, there'd be no difference in, in a reading if you could magically move this, build a substation in an instant and measure magnetic field before and after, there'd be no difference. Because it's so far away.
So to, and I, I take your word that that's true. But, you know, putting myself in the shoes of the property owners, is Duke planning to provide the before and after, you know, measures or metrics?
We have a program in place that people can request magnetic field readings, realtors or whatever, for any, for any reason. Even non-Duke residences that have utility lines that are Duke nearby. We, we provide a service. And, and I arrange those services. So any before and after readings would be fine. But if, if I took a before reading in just somebody's front yard, just around any power line, and then took a reading the next day at the same time, it would be different.
Sure.
But we're talking 150, 200 feet away. There really shouldn't be any difference at all.
Exactly.
But I could still get a magnetic field reading, but it wouldn't, because of the distance, it'd be something much closer, like the home or something, or an underground power line that may be in the community.
Yep, I, I totally get that, right? And so my, my point was only as simple as saying, how do you give confidence to the property owner that, hey, you know, this was the reading at the time, it was before the, the project came online? And here is the number that you are getting after the project went offline or online? And, you know, it is within a percentage tolerance of permissible variations, right? If, if that's something Duke can provide free of charge to the, to the residents closer towards the, yeah.
Specific requests, we, we can provide that.
Okay.
Now, you, you lead to a, a, another point. There is no safe or unsafe level of electric and magnetic fields at power frequency. At other, there are other forms of EMF that have health issues. But power frequency EMF is, is often confused with radiation from X-rays and things like that. And that's the confusing point because that's also EMF. But there are no safe and unsafe level defined by science for power frequency EMF. So I, I couldn't, I wouldn't be saying that it's a certain percentage of a safe value because there is no safe value. It's just, what is it at that point in time?
Yeah, and I think.
And I'm specifically speaking for power frequency EMF, not other forms of EMF.
I understand.
That help?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm just, you know, I'm glad you brought it, that it's a service available to the homeowners. And if they want to avail it, they should. And, you know, we go from there.
We, we have a project team that Marty, Mr. Clayton heads up, and, and I will get those responses or requests through him, and we'll coordinate.
Wonderful, thank you.
Oh, that's, did you have any other questions for the?
Go ahead. With, with your test, so what you're doing is with your substation, you're doing a zero lot line, right? Within the fence or the fence area, not necessarily into the property.
People make measurements anywhere you want.
Okay. And usually, do you do your measurements when the foliage is out? Or more in the winter? Or is on, just on request? To do those, because foliage will absorb some of those waves.
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't understand your question.
I'm saying, do you do it during the winter, when there's no foliage? Or when there's foliage out with EMF, your measurements?
Foliage, from a magnetic field standpoint, fol, uh, trees, foliage, building materials.
Foliage, I'm talking just foliage.
That, that does not shield magnetic fields. So it wouldn't matter. Would, would, we would do the request whenever we get the request. At any time, anybody would want that done at a mutually agreed upon time, obviously.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Any, any other questions about the EMF before we let the gentleman?
Uh, no, no more about the EMF right now. I have additional questions.
All right, well, let's circle back through then. So if you've got other questions, we can just kind of.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Circle back through.
Absolutely.
So I would say, let's go ahead and.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. If you, you said you had additional questions, I'll be kind of, I mean.
Okay, great. And so this, this particular question will actually deal more with the communication with the residents in the neighborhood. I'm assuming that they were made alerted to this rezoning by letter. There, I saw a sign in the, in, on the parcel today. What type of coordination will Duke have with, as far as communication with the residents? So that they are aware that they have these things available to them, where they can request different types of measurements, things like that? Any concerns to LA, any concerns? What, what will Duke do to coordinate with the communities, the HOA?
Thank you.
That's right. So my name is Brandy Reeves, and Public Engagement Manager, as Marty mentioned. As he said, we have notified residents adjacent to the property. And in that notification, we've given them our Public Engagement Hotline and email. So if they had additional requests already or, or questions, they can certainly utilize those channels to connect with me, and then I connect with the project team.
So, so just elaborating, so besides, you know, the, the passive communication, are you doing any active engagements with the HOA? Sitting with them, explaining them what the nature of the project is? What is the impact for them? What is the timeline, et cetera, et cetera?
Sure, thank you for that question. Really, what we wanted to do here tonight is listen to, to the concerns and the questions that you all have and, and what the public brings to us and, and finalize that communication plan moving forward by working with the town and, and working with our project team. Certainly, something like talking with the HOA members and, and, and having that conversation to help them feel fully informed is most definitely something on our radar and that we could do.
Okay, so we have assurance that you will do that with the, the HOA's around? Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll just keep on going.
I mean, you, you, so you already have good questions. I mean, you know, and everyone, I'll get everyone answer their own questions here, but.
Yeah.
I think it makes a little more sense to try. If we've got, no, no, I think, yeah, I think it makes sense to try to flow with one sort of thread, and then we can move to the next.
Thank you for answering that. That's, that's great that y'all, that there will be a proactive approach. I would also, you know, I, I talked about that there was one member of the general public that was concerned about heightened possibilities of exposure to different, to EMF, ELF, radiation, cancer. Another member of the general public expressed some concern about property value. I think it would, on the second, the page after this, there's just kind of a blanket statement that says property value will not be impacted. I, I agree with that, the person that spoke about her concern for property value. It's, the, the fact is, is that this is going to be, have a, a larger envelope. There will be, I mean, people that live adjacent to this property are going to be able to, to see this. It's going to be much larger, it's going to be closer to them. Is there someone on the Duke team that can talk about how this will not impact property value, that it won't make it go down?
Okay.
We would speak.
Thank you.
Can you clarify the, how many feet? Just because of the way the PDF is showing, I believe it's 100 feet, but how, how many feet of tree cover is going to be left on the north side of the property? Yeah, unfortunately, with the PDF, it doesn't scale up. You can't quite read that number, so I just didn't know if everyone could see it, you know? Eighty, okay, okay, all right.
That's to the north, I think that's what you're.
Yeah, well, that, I think that's the primary. Obviously, we have to eliminate all under the power lines.
With regards to the ability of customers to request measurements, how is that advertised to them? How will they know that on an ongoing basis?
We, we have, we have. We can share.
So my concern is really not so much with the current customers who are here, but people moving in. Do you have things on your website? Do you include it with the bills that are mailed out?
I'm sorry, I'm listening. Absolutely not.
Okay.
Again, for this project, the people had the mailers, and they would just contact those people, and then they would get in touch with my group and I would work to do that. But on our website, we have that one graphic that you, that was shown earlier about EMF, we have like three different graphics. One very intense 33-page graphic talks about health and how science looks at that and the conclusions. And that one page that you saw was, that, that one graphic was a one pager, front and back. That's, that is a summary of what most people ask about if they don't want to get into the minutia of the science. And then we, we, we have another item that's on the website. So we don't hide this. We don't, we respond whenever there's any questions about that and go take measurements and document it if it's necessary. But typically, it's done with a realtor's buying and selling property or something like that. That's typically how, how it occurs.
Thank you. I, I share the same concerns, a lot of the customers, about the value of their homes decreasing. You know, all of this stuff is, is new to me as well, but I do deal with property values on a pretty regular basis in my job. Honestly, I can't see how property values don't go down. If I'm looking for, you know, a home to buy and everything else being equal, I could buy a home next to the substation or a home a mile away. I'm going to choose a home a mile away. And I think a lot of people would say the same thing. It'd be interesting, you mentioned some studies. It'd be interesting if we can see some of those and see what the impact has been on housing values where these substations are, you know, similar to this size. The other thing I would just, that's all for now, thank you.
Thank you. Josh, you have any other?
I may, I may circle back, but I'm, I'm okay.
Sanjay?
So we are talking here in terms of the size of the property. Could you elaborate? You, you talked about the demand in 2000 was 100 kilowatts. Now it is 208 kilowatts. So what is the size of the subdivision that you are trying to build? So when, when fully constructed, how much power is it going to create or generate?
Yeah, that would probably easier, just, yeah, I mean.
John Carter, project manager for Duke Energy. Address 411 Fayetteville Street. And what was your question again? You say the size of the substation?
Yeah, I mean, so what's, today's power station, as, as the manager said, it's about 100, you know, it supports 100 kilowatts? Or, you know, what's the capacity, right? Mega watt, sorry.
Basically, what is it adding?
E, yes.
Okay, I'm not the S M U that, I don't have the specifics on that, but I definitely follow up on that. But I do know it is supporting the growth in Mooresville for new customers that are coming in.
Yeah, but that's, that's a very generic statement, right? If, if you are making an expansion, are you expanding the capacity from, you know, two times, three times? Because Mooresville is going to keep growing, right? My, my second, third question was going to be, when, by the time you build it out, I don't know what the kind of timeline you're talking about, and there is more demand towards our McCrimmon side and others, what's your plan? Are you?
Currently, this project, the plan for this project is to expand. And we want to get this in service by, right now, the summer of 2024. This will be in place until we actually got a second project that's coming, Project Sparks, that's going to support the rest of the load that's coming to the Mooresville area.
Sorry, did you say there is another project that is on, that is coming along? Okay, so do we know roughly what kind of timeline you're talking about there?
For the second project?
Yeah.
Currently, I don't have a timeline for that.
Okay. Have we explored the possibility of not doing the expansion here, but doing it on the, the new site as to, to chatter to the load of, the additional load plus the load that you are going to have from here?
Due to the current, where the substation is located at, this is the only location we, we can expand this substation to support the growth. We can't expand nowhere else in order to support the growth in this area.
So some of, one of the questions I had was, there's a substation near the Cricket Park. There's a substation near the Cricket Park. Is that not possible to support from there? I mean, it looked, just not being a power line engineer, it looks closer geographically.
Right, according to the studies that we put, got from distribution, this substation is the only substation that we can expand to support the growth around this substation.
I mean, but it was what that? Somebody sat down and decided, and there's a technical reason why you can't do it?
Correct, that's correct.
You understand, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still trying to grasp what you just said. The additional capacity is for, for, to support the demand around the current substation, right? So we are talking about the properties along 55, along the McCrimmon Parkway. I don't believe beyond the railway lines. This is toward, before the railway lines, and so.
Goes on to the airport. Does, does this not go out to the airport? Does this substation not go out to the airport? I mean, he was saying that, that, so this, this serves a pretty large area, correct? This goes well past downtown Mooresville. It goes out towards, it goes down, the circuits go down Aviation Parkway, correct? Yeah, yeah.
Excuse me. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Micah Retzloff. I'm Duke Energy's siting manager. So I'm responsible for all of the new substation, new transmission line development in, in our region. So, so the question, Marty mentioned earlier a, a quote about the amount of, of. So the question, Marty mentioned earlier a quote about the amount of load that we currently serve in Morrisville and what we're seeing in the future. One of the things to point out is that while we are doubling the capacity of this particular substation, we have other substations in Morrisville. We have other substations on the periphery of Morrisville that provide service here. So, I don't think that Marty was implying that this one station, you know, serves everything, I'm sorry, excuse me. But, but rather, you know, it's a, it's a patchwork, it's like water lines or sewer lines or even the cell towers above us. They've got to be, you know, geographically close to the end customer. So this station, by expanding it, you know, I think it's been mentioned a few times, it will double the capacity of this particular station, but it's really about the customers that we're going to serve in the immediate area. And we know that we have, you know, more load happening along Airport Boulevard, you know, kind of east of here. If you look at the specific feeders that leave this station, they exit out to Morrisville Carpenter, some go to the west, two go to the east. And it's the feeders that go to the east that are most problematic. That, the capacity on those two feeders are at or near capacity, and or we see, you know, early next year that they'll, you know, the load, the growth here in Morrisville will exceed the demand, the available capacity in those feeders. So, we do have another project that's currently in the works, north of here, up towards the Airport Boulevard area, up towards, near the intersection of McCrimmon Parkway. That is going to be a new substation that's going to be functionally equivalent to what we're talking about here, once this is expanded to the full two transformer, two bank station. So, you know, it really is indicative, while, you know, while we can't, you know, the way the system is designed, the feeders will support one another from various stations, you mentioned the station behind the Cricket Park over there. Certainly, there's two transformers there that serve some of our retail load. Those, some of those feeders from that station interact with some from this station, they all support one another, they back one another up, there's redundancy, there's resiliency built into the system. And this new station that we're also beginning our early, you know, stages of the search, you know, it will be, you know, another, you know, facility to not only increase capacity, but increase that reliability, have that backup in the system that we need.
Okay, so this additional capacity is going to, so you anticipate the additional capacity will be enough to serve the Morrisville group needs over the next two years?
Well, and we'd hate to make a finite number like two years. I mean, this is, the expansion of this station will certainly serve some of the existing load, some of the future load where we've already got, you know, we're relatively certain it's coming to Morrisville. I don't know if it's going to be two years, we hope it can get us a little further down the road. I hate to use the term Band-Aid here, but essentially it is a short-term solution.
Understood, and that's why I was trying to get a perspective on this, right? Is if the, today, the additional demand is for 50 megawatts, is this substation that you are planning for is, let's just say, 80 megawatts? So that you have a 30-megawatt buffer to kind of, not knowing the variable demand that may be in the area, right? There may be more demand than you expect, and we don't want that come in two years, we don't have, your new substation is not up and running, right? So that's the reason I was asking is, what are the parameters you are using for planning this subdivision with respect to the new subdivision that you are trying to bring up? And are you synchronizing the timelines with the demands you are seeing?
Well, certainly, I'd love to say it's, you know, a large percentage of it is highly technical, but some of it is also, you know, based on these customers. You know, not only are we expecting low growth from, as Marty mentioned earlier, the residential development, the multifamily residential, the commercial, but some of our biggest load users on our systems are these large customers, industry like the life science facilities that Marty mentioned. One of the positive things we're seeing from these customers is that they're going to have a ramp-up period. So right now, you know, they're going to have an initial phase of development, they'll have an initial, you know, set of customers that they're going to serve in their facilities. And that allows us to create, you know, to fully serve that load, that proposed load with this expansion. And we're hopeful that as we mature our search for the new station, it will also, you know, kind of the timing works out perfectly so that our new station comes online right as the additional load from these larger customers materializes.
Okay, thank you. One other question before we go down that part. In the past, we have spoken about underground cabling. And I know in this particular case it may or may not be applicable, but is that something you are considering with the way Morrisville is expanding? So that we don't have too many overhead transmission lines going around or, you know, just towards the subdivisions? And during, you know, during winter, get power outages, right? Is, I understand that existing development may be an issue, but new development, how are you addressing that underground cabling?
And that's an excellent question as well, you know, our system, when we talk about lines, they consist of two different types of lines. The transmission line, which is obviously the larger facilities there to the east of this station, and our distribution lines. Historically, Morrisville has required, and we certainly complied by placing our distribution feeders. If you look at, if we could look at the Google Earth, you know, street view of this, you'll see that outside of the driveway there, we have no overhead lines. That's because all of our main feeders are underground and.
That's not actually correct, there are above-ground circuits all down Morrisville Carpenter Road.
On the opposite side of Morrisville?
Yeah, 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 the entire section there is all, yeah.
Okay, well, so, you know, I think what we were planning for the new station, this is the station that I'm mostly involved with, is delivery of feeders underground. Right now, that's the push, if some of those, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, if some of the feeders on the south side of Morrisville Carpenter are above ground, they're probably some of our legacy feeders. I think that, you know, when we develop the new bank of this station, that the majority of our new feeders out of it will probably be placed underground in the public right of way.
Because that was a question I actually had, because you can see the lines, because obviously the transmission line is to the east, right? So you're taking off that and you're stepping down, like, there was no sort of discussion about where's the power going out? So that was what I was, I was wondering about, that was a question I had.
Yeah, and you're right, the more I think about it, Airport Boulevard's got a lot of overhead. You know, again, you know, we're talking about, you know, the difference between, you know, the older legacy designs of this system versus the modern system here in Morrisville. You know, a lot of municipalities require and request that we place our distribution facilities underground, and we're certainly happy to comply when we can technically accomplish that.
Okay, since you're building the new one, I would really like to say that there will be a concerted effort to actually try and maximize underground cabling, as opposed to, in other words, keeping the overhead as an exception, to an exception, rather than being, okay, we'll do it based upon the need, right?
Absolutely, and, you know, while, while I can't, you know, completely commit to anything at this time for the future station, I think what we're seeing up there along McCrimmon Parkway is that all of the utilities in that area, all of the fiber, all of the telephone is presently underground, so we'll follow along with that, that trend.
You have to realize, you've gotten, you stepped into a little bit of an issue from the past where you guys have had technical issues with complying that weren't obvious to non-engineering people. Ken?
So basically what you're utilizing, with your plan here right now, you're doing the footprint of the land, but you're utilizing the spine or the skeleton of the old transmission line, other than increasing capacity. It's not, you're going to, as I would put it, increase the erector sets with towers or anything, you're going to use what you got based there.
That's right, I mean, certainly as the graphic shows, we've got to, we're going to take, we're going to have to feed the new bank of our station with another very short transmission line that would be overhead, but again, all of the distribution is presently proposed for underground.
Okay, and there's roughly over 3 million-plus square feet coming onboard on McCrimmon with the biotech centers there. So would this take care of that on an interim basis or what you call the stage-in basis?
Interim, let's call it the interim basis.
Okay.
Certainly, we believe that the expansion here will be enough to satisfy their construction load needs. Those facilities up there, you know, developing all brand-new raw land properties.
Right.
But certainly as they get into the mode of leasing out space in their facilities, and again, I'm assuming that, you know, Morrisville is still seeing new neighborhoods built, new apartment complexes developed, you know, we're going to quickly arrive at a point of carrying capacity where that new station is going to be needed to pick up the full build-out load of those large customers along McCrimmon, plus all of the other development we're seeing here.
Can I ask, or do you have, where's it roughly going to be located in the section ways? Are you still looking?
I can say is that in honesty, we are early on in our search phase. We are going to conduct a search no different than we always do with our modern substation searches, you know, avoiding as best we can residential development, looking for places where the use will be, you know, compatible with other, you know, non-residential, commercial, industrial uses. Up in that area, we know we've got some good industry and some available land that's near the industry. So we're hopeful that we'll find, you know, ready, willing, and able property owners.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I have one, so I want to, is there any technical reason or have you looked at, make, this couldn't be compacted any? Because I know, obviously, removing the trees is, you know, that's, I mean, nobody wants to see trees go. I mean, you have this coming at an angle rather than straight, parallel with the other, I mean, is there technical reasons why that's the case?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the technical reason, you know, well, and I may be getting awful close to outside of my subject matter expertise. William, do you want to approach this? William's with our transmission line engineering group, he will talk a little bit about our design standards, the requirements of our regulators, so.
Hi, Board, William Parish, Transmission Line Engineer with Duke Energy. The reason why we have to come in at an angle is, so there's currently two switches on the main line out there, and in order to properly isolate or be able to isolate in the future electrically those two lines, there has to be a switch in the middle of, where the existing line comes straight, and then we have to go up a certain distance because we have to install a switch in the middle. And then there's a switch on the other side of that as well. So, and on top of that, in order to provide operations and maintenance, proper working distance to safely maintain and operate the line. There would be a switch similar to what's out there already in between.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
Josh Pecking?
Yeah, actually, I have a couple more. Was it Ms. Reeves? Hi, so I heard you mention that it was, maybe I misheard, was it just the adjacent property owners that were alerted to the substation? Yeah, thank you.
That's right, the communication thus far has been to the adjacent property owners on the north and the east of the property line.
Okay, and maybe this is a question for town staff, was, is there a certain distance where mailers sent out to property owners within a number of feet of the substation?
500.
500 feet, okay, and mailers were sent out, okay, great, all right, thank you.
Anything else? Any further discussion, any other concerns that? We've got half of Duke Energy's staff here we can take advantage of.
I'll go back to what Brian's request was, right? The weed whacking, you know? This is not the first time I have heard that kind of a complaint around Duke, you know, being not a good citizen, if you will, or good neighbor. I would seriously urge Duke to ensure that the, you know, customer service for things like what Brian pointed out are addressed in a timely manner, right? And, you know, this is not just, I'm using Brian's as an example, but I've also heard the similar complaints from other subdivisions where the transmission line or, you know, or Duke Energy apparatus are around.
Can you, is there a standard, yes, but, I mean, if you could address that too, is there a standard that you guys have and what is that standard? I guess we'll be the first place to start, because then we could determine, are you guys, you know, meaning that?
Couple of things that I would offer there, certainly, we want to and need to maintain our vegetation to avoid any interruptions with the power lines, so that's one thing. The other thing that I would submit is, and I would ask, and I have already told the gentleman that I do want to meet with him to understand his specific situation, but I would also remind the board that in many cases, we do not own the property in question. We simply have an easement across the property in question. So that creates another dynamic that we will have to work through. It doesn't mean that we can't address it, we can't look at it, but I would ask you to give us that opportunity, and I will commit to you and the board that I will personally get engaged in that situation and follow up on it and be glad to let you know what we found, okay?
Thank you.
So, the property that is on the screen now is owned by Duke Energy Progress. So, yeah, I mean, if you want to have, I hate to have too much discussion because we can't really record that, but she does have a concern with vegetation, so if you could address that with multiple people there, that would be. So, if you, if you could, if you have concerns about the vegetation, it does appear that Duke is willing to work with you guys. Maybe you can check with the H O A. I mean, I'm looking, do you know specifically, you were saying, like, I'm looking right now at the property, and it's difficult for me to tell what part of this may actually be on Duke's property and how much of that is owned by the residents. It does appear that a certain amount of these properties are onto the right of way there.
And that's the part that I would commit to the board that I would be glad to address. And even in the situation where we have an easement and the customer feels like that we're not properly maintaining the easement, I'll be glad to follow up and get with our vegetation management team and ask them to take a look at that. Again, that's my commitment to the board and to the customers and the community that's here tonight, be glad to do that.
Thank you, thank you. All right, any other questions? So, do we have a motion, does anyone want to read out, thank you, thank you, everyone. Brooke, could you put the, oh, do we have it here? No, we don't, could you put that?
The title of the resolution should be on the last slide.
On the last slide. So, does anyone want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll do it.
Recommend approval.
This is a motion recommending approval of ordinance 2022-438-0, approving a zoning map amendment for 940 Morrisville Carpenter Road, approximately 14.25 acres of property located along the north side of Morrisville Carpenter Road, east of its intersection with Leafy Creek Drive, from the low-density residential zoning district to the conditional low-density residential zoning district.
I think you should, I think you have to read all that, the R A Z, yeah, I think we need to read that also, the last, the R A Z 22-0010.
Okay, parentheses, R E Z 22-0010.
Thank you, do we have a second? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? So that's, you get that, Brooke? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. Yes, I mean, if anyone wants to leave now, you can.
And just for the public's information, the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board will go forward to our town council. Those meetings are anticipated in January.
All right, thank you. Okay, I guess staff comments, Michelle?
Brooke, would you mind bringing up the newsletter? Thank you.
Thank you. Just to review a little bit of the development activity from November, there were no new site plans or development combos that were submitted. But we did approve at the staff level, one new development. That was a three story, 36,000 square foot office building on Slater Road. You may remember that one. A conditional rezoning came to a year or so ago with multifamily on one side and office on the north side. So that's that office development on the north side of that road. In other news, we had two of our planners in the department that have achieved and received the North Carolina Zoning Official Certification, so want to congratulate them on that. And town council does continue to talk about affordable housing. They had a work session, discussion about two hours long and are looking for some time to continue that discussion of both the potential community servant housing choice program and the U D O incentives. So we'll continue to keep you updated on that as that project continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Board comments? Let's start with Rick this time. Any comments? Just general comments?
No comments, I'm fine.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Just want to thank the Duke Energy people who are here for your time and your responsiveness and to the also want to thank the members of the community who came up and and made their voices heard.
Same, thank you. Sanjay?
I just want to take the opportunity to wish everybody here a happy holidays and, you know, stay safe and enjoy time with family.
Josh?
I'll just reiterate what Ken said. Thank you, everyone from Duke for coming and the public as well. This is the largest PCB board meeting I've ever been a part of. So it's nice to see some people in the seats for once.
Yeah, you you should have been there when we were discussing the extension of Town Hall Drive.
But yes, I also like to thank everybody for coming out. I know it's not always difficult to come up and speak in front of everyone, and it's appreciated and it's a good part of the process. Thank you. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you.